As the Chair of the Brattleboro Planning Commission, I will call our September 7th meeting to order at about 6:00 PM now. And I will just pass it right over to our Planning Director Sue Fillion to introduce the presenter.
Thanks all for being here in person and on Zoom. The Brattleboro Planning Commission is working on producing a set of land use regulation amendments to help spur housing development in Brattleboro. We had two neighborhood walks last week to see different spaces of housing and different areas of development. And tonight, we are having a presentation about making middle housing happen with Randy Sax from Place Cent, who's the consultant that we're working on. So we've got a presentation and then some discussion. And if you can bear with us, we will be taking both the Zoom comments and the people in the room. So thanks so much for coming tonight. Randy?
Thank you, Sue. So I think we are technologically ready to go. Okay. So I thought I would open with a couple of the findings from your housing study that was completed last year as sort of to frame our conversation going forward tonight, recognizing that housing is an urgent problem in Brattleboro, referencing the issues of the supply of housing, quality, and affordability. So, sorry, we still have some minor technical work going on here, but we'll get there. So the Housing Action Plan also does point out the, and makes a estimate of the need for housing in Brattleboro, finding a need, sort of immediate need for more than 500 units, and referencing in particular attainable level rental units in the downtown and the surrounding areas as the most urgent need. As we were on the walk, the two walks that Sue referenced, there were a fair number of questions about middle income housing or versions of that concept, whether you're talking about workforce housing or housing affordability more broadly. And without having numbers in front of me, I'm really bad at citing numbers. So I thought I would actually put a few slides in here at the beginning to give folks who did have those kinds of questions some background information. There's a lot more in the Housing Action Plan itself if you want to dig and see a little bit more information about both the community's demographics and the housing stock and housing profile. So a couple of points here is to speak about the rate of housing creation in Brattleboro. So from, looking from 1990 to 2020, so over a 30-year period, the average was about 27 a year, and that hasn't been a steady increment every year. There were years where there would be a larger project with more units, and then some years with very few, you know, a handful of new units created. But over that 30 years, you get some sense of what has been built. It's a relatively slow rate of housing creation. And most of the new units that have been created, so 55% of the new units that have been created in the last 10 years have been in multi-unit buildings. And this is going to go into the conversation we're going to have tonight about the kinds of housing that have been built in Brattleboro in recent decades, and whether there is a way to diversify the housing opportunities in the community by thinking about other types of housing that would be a good fit in the community. I know there was quite a bit of interest in the walk about prices of homes and rents and such as we were walking around, and some questions and discussion around, you know, what has the last two, three years done in response to demand changes due to COVID. So Brattleboro's median sales price in 2021, which is the most recent year, you can get a median for a detached single home, so this doesn't include mobile homes, and it doesn't include condo townhouse units either, was 255, so 255,000. That is up after adjusting for inflation, but it's not the sort of huge spike that was seen in some communities in Vermont. It's an increase, but it's sort of a continuation of a trajectory that was started before 2020. And amazingly enough, if you go back far enough and you do those sale price medians and you see what has been happening in the housing market in Brattleboro, that number doesn't exceed the peak that was last seen in 2005 to 2008, the lead up to the Great Recession. The price, the median price when you adjust for inflation was actually higher than it is now. There was a bump in the number and the, you know, amount of activity in the market, in the ownership market in 2020, but it wasn't a huge one either. So I think that's something that, you know, the more resort-oriented communities in Vermont saw a really major spike. You saw a bulge, a little bit of a bump, but not a huge spike, and it wasn't sustained. So in 2021, that increase went back down. And I think anyone who's looked recently knows that, you know, there isn't a ton of supply. So I think we can anticipate for 2022, that number of sale, that sale number staying relatively low, it going up. And, you know, a 10% jump in a year has happened before in the Brattleboro market because, you know, the numbers are relatively small, so it's not completely outside the realm of what has happened in municipal stuff. Those are just sort of interesting points about what has been happening in that part of the market. So when we look at the existing housing stock, it's nearly evenly split between rental and ownership, but that it isn't that ownership and rental housing is evenly distributed across town. So rental housing opportunities are concentrated more so in the downtown neighborhoods where 60% of the housing supply is rental, and it becomes much less common in the more rural areas of town where only 10% of the housing is rental. Obviously, there's lots fewer units out in the rural areas of town than there are in the, in the center. But so, sort of an even, that even notion of sort of equal rental owners, it's interesting to think about how that is laid out across the community and physically in the neighborhoods. And then about 43% of housing is single unit detached homes, and then another 7% is mobile homes. So that basically means it's kind of a 50/50 on the multi-unit to single unit detached. There's some attached single units, so townhouse type developments obviously, and the smaller multiunits, so twos, threes, and fours. So that multi-unit market, if you sort of split or stock, you split that in half, again, you can see that, that distribution that exists in your housing supply. So that's kind of the profile of what the current available housing stock is. So in terms of thinking about the cost of housing, the Census Bureau numbers indicate that more than 40% of households in Brattleboro are cost burdened. And cost burdened is defined as your household is spending more than 30% of income on housing. And that number, once again, is not the same. Fifty, it's 50% for renters and 35% for homeowners. You also see the housing costs in terms of both owners and renters, where those median numbers are. Be hard-pressed to find housing necessarily in the market, either ownership or rental, just because of the supply problems at those median prices, but across the board, that's where the median falls. And then the income number is interesting as well in terms of thinking about the difference between owners and renters. This is a point that's raised in your Housing Action Plan. So the median household income for renters is significantly lower than for homeowners. But there's also some other demographic components to that distinction between the homeowner group and the renter group that help explain that. So 60% of the renting households are single-person households. So they have one wage earning individual essentially, whereas only 32% of the ownership households are single persons. So the number of ownership households that have two wage earners is significantly more than, than in the renter group. And then renters, as we know, tend to be both in the younger age group, there's a higher percentage of renters, and in older age groups, there's a higher percentage of renters. And we also know that income levels are lower on average for the lower age group and the higher age, older age group. So that helps explain some of that difference in terms of household income for renters. So the single-person households are extremely cost burdened, sort of across the spectrum, whether they're homeowners, whether they're renters. And when we look forward at the, what does affordability mean, numbers, you can start to see how, you know, the level of employment and wages that you would need to earn as a single wage earner to support a household and afford housing, and how, obviously, if you have two incomes coming in, these numbers start to look a little different. So we already talked about what affordable means, that's that 30% of household income number. These are actually the limits that are established by HUD, and they are used by various state programs, that, you know, housing programs. And so they look at both housing, the number of persons in the household, and then different levels of income. So this table is set up showing you that range from what is considered extremely low income, which is earning less than 30% of the area median income for your household size, through very low income, low income, moderate, and then median. And so when we talk about affordable housing, or workforce housing, or middle-income housing, this is really the range that is covered by that collection of terms. So, you know, affordable housing programs that's offered, you know, by the state typically are dealing with the low-income category, so up to 80%, and the workforce and moderate income or middle-income housing thing, programs tend, tend to look at that 100 to 100, well, 80 to 120% numbers. So, so this is the, the income numbers that go with that. And if you start translating that through, you can start to look at, well, what does that mean in terms of how much a household spends on housing if they're only spending 30% of their income on housing? And you see that range there, and then it bounced out. Okay, so we skipped one, but anyway, you, the point, the point here being, if we look at, say, the two-person row here, at the low-income level, you know, if you can spend $1,490 a month on housing, just to give you a frame of reference for what that equals in terms of, say, a home purchase, you know, something around 200,000. And the numbers come out pretty nicely here for once in the math. For the moderate income, two-person household number, you're getting closer to 250, and then at the median number, 300,000, just to give you some sense of where that range of numbers lands you in the purchase price, although that doesn't include needing to have the down payment to go along with the ability to purchase, which is another area. So looking at the idea of middle housing from an affordability point of view and an across point of view, and when we went out on the walks, we looked at the other component of middle housing, which is the type of housing, the, the building form and type of housing. So one of the things that has been studied and noted quite a bit is that in recent years, we have been building across the country, really, detached, single-unit homes and larger, you know, multi-story, multi-unit buildings. But there's a whole range of options in between those two things in terms of scale and intensity and types of housing. And so that's the middle of the spectrum of housing. And so when we're talking about missing middle housing types, we're really talking about the things in, in that grouping that are in between single-unit detached homes and larger-scale apartment buildings essentially. So a lot of times when you encounter this idea of missing middle housing in the news, it seems to be associated with pictures from California. The architects that we just saw, their firm name up there, who coined the term missing middle housing are from California, and needless to say, a lot of the photos are very Californian. But that's not to say that the concept doesn't apply here. It definitely does. And one of the things we're going to do tonight is to walk through some of the historic housing forms that fall into that missing middle range that are common around New England, here in Brattleboro and in other places. So every time someone joins the meeting, my slideshow gets a little distressed, but we're, we're doing it. So attached housing, we're going to start there with, with that. You know, row houses are a very traditional and historic form of housing that you would find in larger mill towns and cities around New England. You actually see less of it in Vermont, but you don't have to go very far south from here into, into Massachusetts, and you'll definitely see this form of housing. You'll find a little bit of it in Vermont, but tend to not find too many examples. But, you know, you can see that it's very similar in scale and in architectural style and proportions to the types of housing that you do see in the older neighborhoods here in Brattleboro. So we also think about duplexes as one of those main types of missing middle housing. And certainly, there are lots of duplexes in Brattleboro. Many of them originally built as duplexes in the second half of the 1800s and into the early decades of the 20th century. And you can see those when we went out. Many of them are essentially worker housing that was, was built for, and sometimes by employers, or at least for people working in nearby mills. You know, you can travel places and see entire rows of them, entire streets of them put together, saying basically the same form of duplex housing. These can be, you know, owners in both sides, they can be owner and rental, you know, an owner occupied rental, they can be two rentals. There's different ways of owning the land associated with them, but the basic form is pretty similar. So as we continue along the scale here, we think about three and four unit buildings, those definitely exist, but in smaller numbers than the duplexes do. And I think we all know about the triple-decker as being probably the most common form of that. There's some, some of those, example or two here in Brattleboro, and you can find a few in other Vermont municipalities, but they're obviously not as common as they are, say, in Massachusetts. But, you know, the basic idea being that it's, it's a three-unit building. It's, many of those were built for an owner occupant and then two rental units for income. And many of them continue in that form today. And we also see buildings that were probably started life as a single unit of housing and had an addition. In many cases, you know, they had an addition 100-plus years ago to add additional units over time, or, you know, in response to a demand in the marketplace. We like to think that, we look at housing, you know, in our current perspective and think that, you know, there's always, there's, the, the principles and the ideas of demand and supply existed in the, in the 1800s, just as they do today in many ways. And so there were periods of speculative building and of, you know, suddenly needing to house a lot of people who showed up. And you can see the responses to that when you actually go out and walk the neighborhoods here in Brattleboro and in other surrounding communities. So, you know, these types of houses, three, four units, are, are on that spectrum of missing middle options. And then we look at sort of smaller apartment houses. I tend to think of these as being somewhere, you know, five and up to probably not more than 20, probably usually a little closer to 10. You've got several examples of these as well around Brattleboro. Once again, they're usually associated with providing housing for, for mill or factory workers. I like the picture in the upper center because that one is very interesting. I think that one is actually either in Menusky or Burlington, but it's a, a split triple-decker. So it's six, but in form, it's quite interesting there. A lot of these buildings have a very similar form. They have a center entrance and hallway stairway access to the units, and will have two or four units of floor usually going up like this, and tend to be a fairly block-formed building. So that's a really common form that you can see repeated in many older New England communities. So that's a tour of 19th century missing middle housing. So where do we go as we sort of get into the automobile era, and how has that built form evolved and changed going forward? So we go back to the attached housing form. We're still building attached housing. There was an era when we were building a lot more of it to the late 70s and through the late 1980s. Interestingly enough, that the reason for that was financial. There was a tax loophole that made that a really good investment scheme until it wasn't anymore. And so anyone who remembers the recession at the end of the 1980s, not a lot of this housing has been built since and across most of Vermont. You do find some places where it's still being built, but the big run-up in building townhouses pretty much stopped around 1988 or so. If you often find examples, you know, there's a fair amount of this in the resort communities because they were growing as well. You see, a lot of it is that sort of surface parking, so the buildings are oriented with a parking, to a parking lot to accommodate the cars. Some have sort of integrated garages that go with them. We come back to the duplex. We have continued to build duplexes, probably in lower numbers in most places, definitely in lower numbers than in the late 1900s, but we do still see forms of duplexes. I particularly like the example that's in the big photo, and I'm sorry that the people in the room are seeing the black box. Maybe I should go like, yeah, I can get rid of the black box. This is a, a house that's in the airport neighborhood in South Burlington, and it's very interesting, they're, they're, they're early 1960s house. There's single-unit versions of this house, there's duplexes, and there's triplexes in that neighborhood. So if you can go look, there's only a couple of the triplexes, but there's a few more of the duplexes. Very interesting, interesting form. It is a stick-built house, but it picks up some of the things that you might see in a mobile home of that era architecturally. So it's got an interesting form. You know, you see some raised or stacked ranch-type duplexes. Sometimes those are split by floor, so there's a lower-level unit and an upper-level unit. I believe that's how this one is set up. And then you see sort of two attached townhouses, often with the garage, either the garage is the joining thing in the middle, or the garages are on the end. That's a fairly common form. And then this is the, the upper right photo is actually a new, fairly new, a few years ago, redevelopment in Rutland, where they took some older public housing, which was sort of low-rise apartment buildings, and have replaced that with a new neighborhood street and built these duplexes along that street. So looking at the three and four unit buildings, there's not been a lot of this type of construction really anywhere in Vermont, sort of post-World War II era. Most communities weren't really growing at the rate that would have led to demand for this type of housing. We've started to see a little bit of infill and new projects come online, mostly affordable housing projects. These are all from things that have gotten built in the last five years or so. The one on the upper right is in Woodstock. I think the two on the left are actually somewhere over in Franklin County, but I can't quite remember now which towns are which. But these, you know, types of buildings that have three or four units in them, most of these are rental, but there's no reason a building like this couldn't be ownership units with condo ownership-type arrangements going along with them as well. And they're very similar, obviously, in scale and form to traditional New England house forms that you'd find in neighborhoods around Brattleboro. And then in terms of small apartment houses, there was, again, not a lot of this construction until probably getting closer into the 80s and 90s. And then that was, once again, mostly affordable housing and sort of low-rise, small units that got built in the 80s and 90s. So much of what's getting built currently for affordable housing tends to be larger multi-unit buildings. You know, 20, 30 units or more tends to be the low end of what, what gets built. So, you know, some of these types of buildings have been very recently built, but hadn't been built for quite a while. So the point of giving you a little architectural tour is to think about what can fit into Brattleboro, what are the options for meeting housing needs and for diversifying that range of, of housing types so that there are more choices for people that meet their needs in different forms of households, different sizes of households, different ages, et cetera. So greater range to choose from. so greater range to choose from. So obviously, one of the choices that is thought about are accessory dwellings. So, you know, a second unit associated with a primary single unit home, whether that's within the actual, you know, home itself, or it's a it's a separate building, as these examples are. There certainly, if you look, go and walk and look around the neighborhoods in Brattleboro, you can see lots of opportunities where there are outbuildings or the opportunity to put outbuildings in that could have and function as an accessory dwelling. The cottage cluster form of housing is something that there's been a fair amount of interest in recently, particularly as sort of retirement housing, and these tend to be, as shown in the upper photos, not necessarily affordable. As we might think of them, they they have been you know, a higher end of the market examples there. But there has been, the photo down in the lower left are the Kirby cottages from South Burlington. Those were meant to be more of a a middle income, middle housing option. They have a storied history that goes along with them that involves their location being very near the airport. But that building form there, and then on the other lower right is more of a a much smaller footprint cluster development as well. So thinking, you know, if if households are increasingly going to be one person households, you can have a larger number of those. Exactly how much square footage per person we we need in a thousand. And then thinking about the attached building forms from, say, the perspective of of energy efficiency. You know, this is a really good option. It it has a lot of benefits from from that point of view. It still can provide for private yard space, but me a much more compact use of 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 land and and get to to hire higher numbers of housing units and people. You can do it in a very conventional, traditional way. You could do it in a much more contemporary architectural way. And the example to the right is an affordable housing project as well. So it could be a different price points. And then we come around to the multi-unit buildings and thinking about the scale and and type of those, whether we're looking at senior housing options, which case, you know, some cases, the single level approach is has some benefits. A a mix of of building types has been something that a number of projects around the state have have pursued in the last few years. So there's both larger multi-unit buildings and then some smaller ones mixed in. So that's thinking about the the multi-unit side. And then I'm going to give, I think I'm going to stop here and go back to the slides and we can open up for questions and comments, so.
So we didn't discuss how we're going to arrange the talking. So do we have folks in the room who want to to make a comment? Or ask a question? Does no one's jumping up. So what about online if people want to speak?
So we have a question online of how to raise your hand or how how can you speak online? So under reactions on the bottom of your screen, there's a little smiley face. Hope that's what you're looking at. If you click on that, there is a raise your hand and then we can call on you. So John.
This is a great presentation, background presentation. I have a question though. None of the solutions that you mentioned appeared to address the issue of rental unit requirements. And my question fundamentally is with a medium income of $23,000, 30% of that is well below the median rental average rental nowadays. So what are you driven to bundling up multiple non familial relationship people into single units through multi-bedroom requirements, for example? I I don't see how you satisfy, I don't see how you satisfy the challenge of your medium rental desired income with the the rental median rental price, if all that makes sense.
So we did not focus in looking at the images at sort of the the housing costs associated with the examples shown. I really wanted to focus on the forms and the types of buildings to to get a sense of the choices. I think within most of those categories of building types, there are approaches and building examples at different price points. So there are ways to to do, you know, attached housing that creates affordable units, and there are projects that have have built attached housing that are, you know, very high end ownership units. So the form is not necessarily driving the price entirely. You know, I think all of these housing forms tend to have a much smaller demand for land per unit than a conventional detached single unit home, particularly in a more rural setting. So they are addressing the land cost to the extent possible there. But, you know, we also would need to look at the program side of, you know, for meeting the affordable housing component, particularly for the folks in the low income categories, as you saw the numbers, you know, housing, new housing construction is not going to hit those numbers without public supports and subsidies, which is, you know, how the market is currently working.
Thank you for the answer.
Brandy, you gave in the last few slides examples of what you think or just what is good fits for Brattleboro for types of housing? What, if any, would you advise are not good fits for Brattleboro?
I think that the the range of the middle is a good fit. So I think across that range, there are some building types, if we went back to that slide that started at the beginning that had the drawn diagram of missing middle housing. There are some forms in there that are not particularly common in New England at all. So like courtyard apartment buildings, not really something you see a lot of around here. Doesn't mean you couldn't build a courtyard apartment building and and make it fit into a a neighborhood in Brattleboro. You probably could. It it would just be the first of its type to show up. So I think in terms, I mean, one of the things about that middle concept is that in terms of scale, it fits the existing built form that you've got. You know, once you start thinking about the larger multi-unit buildings, you're thinking four stories usually and much larger structures. So they're often, you know, 60 to 80 feet by 150 to 70 ish feet, something in that range is is the pretty standard current model for for building that. And that's obviously a building that's quite different than much of the residential construction in the the what we'll call sort of the serviced portions of Brattleboro. So, you know, the the downtown neighborhoods and and west Brattleboro neighborhoods. But certainly buildings like that, you know, have a place in the community. But we're thinking about from the perspective of the neighborhoods, what what could fit there? So we have a couple in the room and we have Jen on Zoom. So should we start the room?
Yeah.
Jen, we will get to you.
If I stand here, will it hear me on there? Moving on, please, moving for Brattleboro. My question is about the basic fundamental 500 units necessary now. And a quite a matter of, you know, efficiency and breaking it up. You know, if we're building two units at a time, that's, you know, 250 new building projects that we need to complete in that Brattleboro. Five unit, a five unit, you know, that's 100 new building projects in Brattleboro. A 50 unit, we only need to build, you know, 10 of those projects to meet to meet that 500 unit demand. Is there a way that that we're actually going to be able to meet anywhere near the demand that we're talking about with these smaller units in the space available in Brattleboro?
So my response to that would be that it's not an all or nothing on the on the middle, that you, there's definitely going to be more of hopefully buildings, you know, larger multi-unit buildings built to serve. You know, to to fill the supply that's needed there. But if you go in and you dig into the housing action plan, you actually can get a better sense of sort of what what is covered by that need of 500. And, you know, building only one form of housing, so building those 10, 50 unit buildings might not actually meet the need in some ways, because some of that need is for housing of a different type. So there's also, you know, no, you've you've been able to put an accessory dwelling unit on your your residential property for for a long time now under Vermont law. There's no regulatory barrier really to doing that, particularly in the portions of Brattleboro that are connected to municipal water and sewer. There's not a line outside the door of the planning services office seeking to get permits to build them. So we know that it's a slow incremental increase that's going to come from some of those quarters. But, you know, it's it's also, I think this reason we're doing this part of the project is to think a little differently about what housing is and can be in the community and make sure that there is the opportunity for that full range of 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 options.
Curious about how much land in the federal parts of Brattleboro there actually is for more housing and assuming that there's not enough for 500 units. Has anything been discussed on where you want to develop in town more housing?
So that is something that the Housing Action Plan also speaks to doing a better inventory of. I mean, we certainly know that there's underutilized land. That's, you know, a lot of it is sort of low level commercial use at this point. Whether some of that has the potential to be converted over to housing over time. These little small incremental things of of putting, you know, a handful more housing units on a block. There's obviously opportunity for that within the existing neighborhoods. And there are, you know, a few, relatively few, but there are a few properties around town that are sort of recognized as having potential for more meaningful infill housing. So I think all of those avenues are being explored and it will probably take them all to get anywhere close to meeting that need. Hi, Jen.
Hey, thank you. Thank, this is a marvelous presentation and thank you very, very much. Can I ask you to just double back on something? Because I think, you know, for a long time, the lack of response in the marketplace has been mistaken for a lack of demands, meaning people not generating the kinds of housing units that might be needed has been mistaken as a lack of people who needed those or wanted those housing units, right? So you you touched on something when you were pointing to, I think, kind of the 70s and 80s or 80s and 90s, where there was a specific incentive level. And you would, I know we don't want to drill too much into financial stuff, but can you just touch on that a little bit? I mean, I think that the financial side of this is really important to kind of understand how unresponsive the market is or how skewed it is to either single family or really large multifamily.
So that's, that's definitely true. And so the finance, financial side of the equation is probably a much greater influence over what you actually get in terms of housing creation than the regulatory side. Sadly, this is the the Planning Commission and not the Fed, so we've got to work on the the regulatory side and and not the financial side. But definitely at the federal level, tax policies and and housing policies and banking and finance policies have driven the forms of housing that we see today and continue to influence it. And, you know, those those things shift over time sometime, you know. Like I said, we were looking at some of those affordable things I pointed on to the screen and said some of those were affordable projects. So the type of of housing, the actual physical form of housing that you can fund using the federal affordable housing tax credit monies and things like that has changed over time. So projects that got built in, you know, the early 1990s, you couldn't get that same essentially, what is essentially the same stream of money to do that same form of construction today. So the state, the federal government has has policies and guidance and and is driving funding in certain directions and the state does as well. And so those are a big influence. And there's also, you know, other regulatory aspects that are outside the zoning that come in and have an influence as well. So when we were on the walks, we actually looked at some adoptions of buildings to to meet building code to allow for multi-unit housing in them. That's outside the purview of the the municipal zoning, that's a state building code requirement. But that is also influencing the form of housing and what's possible out there. So there's lots of 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 factors, but the finance one is is significant. There's definitely been changes that have occurred, particularly in the banking structure after the 2007 ish, eight ish recession that have affected particularly smaller builders and and that has been a challenge in Vermont. So there's lots of these barriers that are out there that are beyond the immediate control of the municipality, but are definitely a serious component.
So just one last question, Brandy. So with the new land regulations that are out, how would this relate or collate or equitate to the new land regulations that are now coming out and is going to be also a part of this new housing?
So next steps? Yeah, so you on the Planning Commission will be considering some amendments. So so far, we have done a technical review of the town plan, the goals and policies from the town plan and the Housing Action Plan and looked at the current regulations to see where there is room for being more effective at implementing those housing related goals and policies. And so the next step, we've we've done some some outreach to get some input from the community and and start to raise awareness of what's going on. And then the next phase is to actually look at some proposals. So we know from looking at the audit, we're going to to think about the the PUD standards a bit and how those are working. And and we know that we're going to look at some couple of zoning district lines. You already made some, obviously, some prior changes to the regulations that dealt with density. So we might be looking at some of the setback questions that came up that we looked at during the walks. So that's what's going to be happening over the next couple of months. I would expect that somewhere in the January to March timeframe, we're going to be back around to having something to bring out, to present to the community and get further feedback on.
I would add, one of the things that we're doing with the grant too is to look at, the state has a couple of incentive programs to help you know, make it a little bit easier to build housing, whether it's reduction in to help, um, you know, make it a little bit easier to build housing, whether it's, um, reduction in Act 250 fees or water and sewer fees. So one of the areas, this goes to a question we had earlier about, you know, one of the things we want to look at is, is the Winston Proudie campus appropriate for this neighborhood development, um, designation, um, which could allow for some infill housing, um, and, and hopefully meet some of the housing needs in the community or at least, uh, be on the way to meeting those needs. So, um, there's something.
Yeah, there's been some change to those, those state programs since Bravo got its initial, um, designation for the downtown area. So we're going to go back and see if there's more opportunity now under the new state rules.
And there's a couple of other large parcels too that, you know, are kind of on the, the edge of our developed neighborhoods that can, you know, fairly easily access water and sewer. And, you know, to your, to your point, you know, we want to, we want to have those parcels of land be available for larger scale housing, to kind of get us there a bit quicker. So we'll be evaluating those. Yeah, I guess I just throw out, I mean, is there anything that you saw in the slides that you didn't think was a fit for Bravo or that, you know? Part of the missing middle too is, is hopefully to be able to entice people that own properties, you know? Anybody can be a developer. We think of it as, you know, large scale companies coming in and developing, um, big projects. But, you know, you, you could maybe create two or three units out of your own property. So, um, that's an option and we want to make it easy for people to do that. That's what they want to do.
Yeah, I, I would, um, I think it was really compelling and interesting to see the options. And as we think about development at Proudie, sort of figuring out how, how to add hundreds of units without making it look like four-story buildings, right? So if you think about our neighborhood and the opportunity we have to have it look like the neighborhoods around where we are, it was really helpful to see some of those options and think about how it could even fit into the landscape. So, you know, I think, um, it was super helpful to see that continuum. And, and I guess I, I just kept thinking about, you know, you kept saying affordable housing and I kept asking myself, does she mean capital A, capital H? Or not? And thank you, Jen Stromston, for giving me that vocabulary. But like, when we think about the housing continuum, how important it is for the whole continuum to be robust? That it has to be affordable all along the continuum, maybe, you know, the upper end, I don't know. But just, I, I felt like, um, this presentation helps her lay some of that out. So thank you for that. And, you know, I think that particularly that, that discussion around affordable, for the most part, I was using lowercase a, affordable for the presentation. Um, I think a couple of cases, we did look at sort of subsidized capital A affordable, um, examples there in the, um, in the slideshow. Um, but, you know, when you look at those cost burden percentages and you, even you dig a little deeper into sort of who is cost burdened, um, across the spectrum, um, cost burden does, um, extend across that continuum a, a significant ways. Um, and as we think of the dynamics of the population as well, you know, how much, what percentage of the, of residents are, you know, currently age 65 or older? And what does that mean for the next 20 years and affordability of housing for them? Um, as we look at more single person households, um, in the future as well? What does that mean about housing affordability, um, across that, uh, demographic group? Okay, well, thank you very much. If we don't have anything more.
Um, any other questions online or, or in the room? But I want to thank you for attending. Um, you're welcome to join us for the rest of the planning commission meeting. David, tell me if you want to say some words.
Yeah, we have, uh, the rest of the meeting coming up. We're really just talking about one concept, um, here with the accessory structures and accessory commercial units. It's going to be kind of a tentative decision-making, um, agenda item as well as just education and, and brainstorming. But I think maybe we should just take a, a few minutes to transition. Everyone's welcome to stay, just like for all of our meetings. But, um, if people want to leave, I think it'll be better just to take a few minutes to do, of pausing the meeting to do that rather than. So let's say, um, we resume at, um, 7:02. I think we can resume, resume the meeting here. I gave you all an extra minute. It's 7:03.
Ding ding.
Great. So, um, yeah, really just one agenda item of substance. But before that, uh, any announcements and reviewing and approving the last meeting's minutes? Um, but any announcements from anyone? I don't have any personally.
I have two announcements for you. One, um, I want to officially welcome Lena to the planning commission.
Yeah, welcome.
Yeah, um, you may have seen that she was on the emails, um, but yeah, she was appointed in August. So we are a full seven member commission, which is, is great. So thank you.
Should we do, you know, we did the, the round the room thing, you know, when Todd, uh, joined last month. I don't know if we feel the need to do that now. We can at least do names and anyone can say whatever they want.
Absolutely.
Let's start with the, the new commissioner, Lena.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lena Menard. I moved here to Bravo in 2020. Um, I had been living in Portland, Oregon, where I got my master's in urban and regional planning. And I've had a lifelong interest in housing in particular. Um, and I'm curious to see how I can help be a part of all of the amazing things that are happening here to make this an even more wonderful place all the time. Glad to be here.
Great, thank you.
I'm Prince McKinney. Um, I'm a retired hospital administrator and public health person. And, um, I'm especially involved and interested in bike walk advocacy.
Uh, Sarah, we know each other.
Yeah, Tom, and I think, I think we met enough at that walk meeting, so.
Passish.
Passish. I kind of introduced myself kind of.
You'll get the floor back.
Ah, yeah, you're welcome. And I'm Gary Shaw, Tom's sing-along partner, vice chair. So, yeah.
I'm Todd Murkison, and I don't sing well.
I can just drum with two spoons, that's good.
Lena, I'm Sue, the planning director, and.
Do you know Steve?
Captain.
Yeah, you're good at that, looking at the camera. Okay, um, anything else, Sue?
Um, one other announcement that, um, we might want to take up at another meeting um, is that, uh, the 2023 municipal planning grant announcement just came out. Yeah, they're due in December, but, um, if it's something the planning commission wants to think about for a project, um, you know, I think maybe we should talk about it in October or later, putting it off.
Yeah, the, um, this housing thing will be wrapped up, you know, they won't overlap. But when's the estimate for the bike ped master plan to be wrapped up?
That should be wrapped up by the end of this calendar year as well, so December-ish.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there won't be three meetings over, I mean, three grants all overlapping each other, so not even two, so, okay. Yeah, we can discuss that next month, maybe. Todd, did you have something?
I didn't.
Oh, okay. All right, if, uh, no other announcements, let's, um, discuss any edits to the August 1st minutes. And, um, but we can do that maybe after our motion to approve them. Prudence.
Move there, approval.
Todd's second.
Todd's second, okay. Any, um, any edits or questions there? I had one. Um, I forget where it was on the second, I should have called up the Google Drive folder here on my phone. There, there was a part, I think it was on the second page, capping building height, but number of floors. I couldn't, um, I think there was a little typo there, but I couldn't make sense of it.
By number of floors, instead BY instead of by.
Oh, oh, okay. Oh, by number of floors instead of just like a number, like a foot number, okay. Makes sense. Uh, anything else about the minutes before voting on them?
Nope.
Okay, um, all those in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and Prudence?
Um.
Oh, you weren't there?
I wasn't there.
Okay, and Lena, you weren't either, so two abstentions.
Okay.
So that's two absences and two abstentions. Dan is absent.
Yes.
Um, great, okay. So moving on to this agenda item about, uh, possibly exempting certain small accessory structures and, uh, looking into accessory commercial units. Um, this was from last meeting, we didn't get to it, so here it is. Uh, same background materials, um, in the drive folder as last month. And, um, yeah, I guess I'll do a little introduction walkthrough quickly of the, um, of the, of the regs part that I pulled out and made the, the comments and proposal on. Hopefully everyone at least has it, maybe it can be called up on the screen. So, yeah, I remember when I first looked at the land use regs years ago, um, one thing caught my eye that, um, if one just wants to do a small structure or, you know, whether it's a, a doghouse or, you know, a little chicken coop or that's, you know, small, let's, we'll get to that number later, um, or soon, um, what that number may be. Um, there's no, there's no exemption, there's no, there's no cutoff number in our regs. There's all sorts of exemptions for like patios and fences. But at least as it reads, you know, literally, someone needs a permit for a doghouse or a play tree house or a mailbox. And I, I personally still haven't asked, you know, staff how often they get calls or emails where if people ask, you know, do I need this for that? But if you get a lot, then I, I think that kind of helps my argument in one way. But if you don't get a lot, it kind of makes me think that the regs should reflect, um, you know, the reality, which is that I think it's kind of trivial to require oversight and regs and a permit fee in a form for such a small structure. So.
This is yours, Tom.
Yeah, well, just quickly, this document was just comparing our four neighboring, um, or, um, five neighboring, um, Vermont towns and how they either don't have zoning or they all have exemptions for some sort of definition of a small accessory structure. So just to show you that our neighbors, you know, have, have that. But then the other document has excerpts from our land use regs. And, um, I just showed that, you know, you guys saw in the staff memos that there was concerns that, um, about not exempting this sort of thing if it's in the flood hazard overlay and, um, if it's over 100 square feet, because that kind of conflicts with the, um, the town, uh, relevant town departments, um, uh, way of assessing anything that's 100 square feet or over. So I built that exactly right there into kind of a proposed draft, um, extra exemption there. Right, right there, if you could go back down Sue, where, um, I'm just proposing that, um, a freestanding accessory structure with a footprint of, and I meant to write, less than 100 square feet and a height of no more than 15 feet. And I just did the 15 foot because there was some other language in the historic district about that. So it just seemed to keep things consistent. Um, and if it's not used for human habitation and if it conforms to the setback requirements of section 301, then, uh, it should be exempt, is my proposal. And then going down later in the document, there was, um, just a little aspect, um, just, I think the second to last page, something that kind of stood out to me right there is that, um, just the definition of an accessory structure, that what it's, and the way it's written now is that it, um, it's, um, accessory to a principal structure, but not a principal use. So my thinking is that if a property is used as forestry or agriculture or, um, there isn't a permit for a principal building yet, but someone wants to like, hold, you know, have a little tool shed for their supplies, it, it, you know, in preparation to just to landscape the place or just to gather materials or things, um, in preparation. I think a principal use also should be eligible to have an accessory structure under it. For example, a, a place that's just all agriculture with no buildings could have a little accessory, you know, structure under that, that wouldn't be its own principal structure. I'm not sure what all the full implications of that are, but this is kind of separate from the, um, in some ways from the exemption proposal, but it's on a similar topic. So I'll, I'll stop there with introducing it. And, um, I know staff had a memo, um, and a take on this. And maybe Sue, you'd like to give some thoughts?
Sure, I, um, as Tom pointed out, several of the surrounding towns have some sort of exemption on accessory structures. So primarily assessing is kind of linked to when we're issuing zoning permits. I spoke to them, um, you know, generally this is not a hard and fast, um, rule though. If it's 100, under 100 square feet, they don't really assess it because it doesn't have enough value to, to, to mean anything to the property. But on occasion there is, so they don't have a hard and fast rule on that. If they see one, they might check it out and, um, so, you know, there's the potential there. Um, in the flood plain, we do need to permit all structures, even the play structures. This was an issue after Irene, actually. We required a permit from somebody on a play structure, which, you know, seems a little funny, but, um, because, you know, it could break apart and not cause damage. But we are required under, um, the National Flood Insurance Program to do that. Um, we occasionally get a phone call on a play structure, but it's, it's pretty rare. And the answer is on a play structure, if you can pick it up and move it, no, you, you don't need to get a permit. So if it's a tree house, if it's, you know, something that's.
So you're saying that's generally what you just tell people when they call and question?
Yeah, unless it's in the flood plain.
Right.
Special flood hazard area. Um, you know, honestly, it's easier for staff to just require the permit unless, you know, and so that we know that they've complied with the setbacks. Um, you know, if, if we're telling people, well, you must comply with the setbacks, but you don't need a permit, you know, we have no check on that. So, you know, we're a little indifferent, but all things being equal, requiring the permit, you know, is just easier for us. But, you know, we're a little, clearly it's exempted in a lot of places. And it's, um, you know, for the most part, for the assessors, it doesn't have a value. There might be the, a certain occasion where you could have a really nice 100 square foot she shed or something like that. That's got plumbing and heating and that kind of stuff, even if it's just a workspace.
Would it be possible for there to be two, like, to have a checkbox on the form that people are saying, we comply with the under 100 square foot or we, this is going to require a permit? You know what I mean? Like, would it be possible to have there be just a checkbox where people are notifying that they're putting a structure, but also noting that it's under the exemption and there, then there is a record of it?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, that is something that often happens with like a home occupation.
And the agriculture exemption, right? You're still required to notify, but no, no fee or?
Yeah.
Commissioner, questions or, yep.
One thing I noticed was that several of the neighboring areas use 200 square feet and that's a number I've been familiar with in other places as well. I'm curious where 100 came from.
It came from me already kind of, um, asking this or proposing this idea to, to Sue and her saying that, um, 100 square foot is, just gels nicely with the departments, um, not the planning departments, but the, the assessor department's, um, practice of the 100 foot. Um, I mean, we're not beholden to that. I mean, the select board makes the ultimate decision on land use reg changes, but, um, as far as our work here, we could, you know, a majority could approve any number, I suppose.
So a quick question, uh, does that include also if, I think it was in part of the land reform, we went over that too, uh, the person who wants a chicken coop or something like that? A lot of housing now that have been, you know, animals on their property. So is that exempted as well, as well on there too?
So chicken require, um, in the residential parts of town, chicken do require a permit because we want to, um, make sure that their coop is a certain distance from other structures um, for odor purposes and that kind of thing. So, um, yeah, I mean, it's something to think about if, you know, I think that we could still, because the keeping of hens does require the permit. Actually, we can, you know, say, well, if it's a chicken coop, no, you need a permit.
Right.
But I would say if it was in the. But I would say if it was in the rural parts of town where you don't need a permit, then no, they wouldn't need a permit for their chicken coop, it's just gonna be the keeping of hens in our, in the neighborhoods.
And that all falls under what animals are permitted as, what was it, the, part of the law now, certain animals are permitted to be considered domesticated?
Oh, we're not gonna talk him, sorry. Not ready to talk him.
Yeah, I think maybe what you, you may be getting at, and that's who addresses some, is that if we were to approve this, even if someone has a ninety-nine square foot chicken coop, it would still have oversight because of the, what's on the screen right there, the foul, you know, review, so.
Wish we had a.
But it's something to keep in mind moving forward, because if you did have pigs in your yard, they're, they're probably gonna have a pen, or, you know, some sort of structure, so, you know.
Yeah, notice that's a lot of people.
Maybe we don't need a permit for it, or maybe we tie it to whatever, comes like that.
Is there, Sue, do you have any, with the proposed language that I put there, on the first page, was there any, you know, thing that really stood out as, you know, that you think should be changed, or to make it better, or?
No, I think that the language on the first one here.
On the first page, right?
I think that, you know, I probably wanna give it a set of fresh eyes at some point, but I think that that is, is okay. The one that I need to, when I was going over was the other one, the accessory use,
Which we can.
You know, with a, yeah, that one I need to think a little bit about, the implications of that.
Well, what did people, did that make sense to people, the, the one on the, at the last page there, or the second to last page about saying an accessory structure, the definition of it can be accessory, not just to a principal structure, but to a principal use?
Yeah, I mean, I think that there are situations in which there is only land, but a structure is needed to, say, store whatever, materials, or ag, you know, store tools and whatnot, so I don't see why, you know, would calling that structure a primary structure be inappropriate?
It's not what we would do.
Yeah.
I mean, we would clean out a shed on a, you know, on a property that, you know, is being used for gardening, or something like that, and we wouldn't call it a primary, we would still call it an accessory, so, I mean, if you're trying to do it to clean it up and make it
That's what I meant.
easier, we can find a way to do that, but we, we would never say, you can't have a shed on your vacant parcel.
So that's basically all I was trying to do with that proposal, is just to, I guess, doing what, what, what the department already kind of common sense does.
So I, like, from the neighborhood power walks that we did, Sue, a lot of people did have sheds that we pointed out.
Well, there would be a principal structure there, right, of the actual house, but if there's a community garden that has, you know, a little shed or two, that seems to me, I mean, to be honest, off the top of my head, if those little garden sheds were to be called principal structures, I'm not, I'm kind of blanking on what, if any, added rules and burden that that would entail, I guess maybe.
Greater setbacks.
Oh yeah, greater setbacks.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, but we wouldn't.
But you wouldn't anyway, yeah.
Just wouldn't consider it that.
So it's just, for me, it's just that little bit of change wording is just, you know, kind of for the public, to the extent, and how many of them, you know, delve through the land use regs to, to get a better sense of understanding it aligned with how the department currently works and interprets it. So if we were to, to, you know, approve this right now, it's not a final binding thing, what I've seen done within planning commission meetings is that then in preparation for a public hearing, for the land use regs amendments, staff will have like a kind of final-ish version of what, we'll go to the public hearing and we'll see it, or maybe they'll just bring it to us at the actual public hearing, because then we'll have a chance to, to actually give a final consideration and a final vote, at least as far as the planning commission's concerned. But if we were to vote now, that's just to give some, you know, moderate approval to move forward with it. Was that clear enough? Or inaccurate?
Yeah, except I would say, I wanna be, when we warn the public hearing, we are being specific about the language that we're warning.
Oh yes.
So I would want you to see it, finalize it, so, you know, tonight, if you could, yeah, you know, you can say, yes, we're on board with this, you're gonna see a final slate with them, and approve them, and then we'll warn it for public hearings.
Just like that rural business thing we did a couple meetings ago, okay. So, how about a motion to, I guess I'll use your phrase, on board with these two accessory structure proposal wordings?
A motion that we are on board for these two.
I rambled through, and I don't expect anyone to be able to.
That's be word for word on TV now.
The chair can make motions, I should have just sped things along and done it myself. Is there a second? All right, thank you, Todd. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's the five of us, and Lena stepped out, but don't know how long she'll be, so I guess we'll just say she abstained, and move on. Okay, this next one is about this concept of accessory commercial uses, or units, maybe they're interchangeable, but it's ACUs for short, and kind of exciting in my mind. Steve put together a good memo with a lot of, you know, analysis and example photos. We could take time to go through that in detail, or we could just start off with questions, if everyone has felt like they've seen a fair amount, or Steve could maybe veto all of that if he really wants to present something. Okay. Well, the commissioner could speak up maybe right now, if they've, not that commissioner out there in the hallway, if they
A little feedback.
If they feel like there's something that they really want, you know, explained, that they either didn't catch, you know, in the memo, or missed, or, or anything, they'll just open it up. That can be either Steve, or any commissioner, to start us off with questions.
I guess with Steve doing his 5.0 presentation, we can.
Yeah, what do you think, Steve? It's worth asking if anybody had a chance to already read this prior, I know we, we didn't get a chance to go over it in the meeting that it was presented for, so, that was a two.
I'm working on it.
It's a work of progress and a digest.
It's not, it's not summer reading, you don't have to do a book report, but it seems like maybe it's worth skimming through, that's the high points, if, if that seems worth it.
Yeah, I think so, thank you.
So, I can't exactly recall what prompted the conversation that drove interest in having staff explore this particular concept, but.
Well, we talked about this like a year ago, and then it kind of just disappeared for no good reason, I mean, or maybe not a bad reason either, we just didn't, we never like sent it around for a vote, it was just an educational thing, and then we just never, never moved on it, and so, here we go, maybe we will move on it.
So, the ADU accessory dwelling unit is getting quite a lot of love and affection in the public realm lately, and it's actually, in some ways, protected by state law, so we have made it allowable in all of our residential areas. I think actually, you could propose it in any of our zoning districts, except for the industrial zone, whereas, taking that concept and taking the dwelling out of it, and thinking about accessory unit, maybe putting in, say, industrial, or commercial, or, you know, what have you, that had us thinking about, is that something that could be done for other types of land use? And while I think that Strong Towns has some interesting things to say about what would effectively be, I guess, an accessory industrial unit, the ACU, if you will, accessory commercial unit, is something that we decided to focus on specifically, and so, as it turns out, these things actually sort of do have a history, and have since been less common in the built form, it's the same story that we pretty much always hear, which is that it was more common prior to World War II, and then we fundamentally changed the way that we set up our commercial and residential built forms, and we very much decided to separate those physically, in a way that was not as common prior. But more relevant to our particular conversation here is, do we actually need the flexibility that an accessory commercial unit might be able to add in a similar way that the accessory dwelling units ostensibly do in primarily single-family, low-density residential areas, where maybe there's limited potential for more substantial large form infill, but also, maybe there's not an appetite to tear down your house and redevelop. So that small envelope tends to help with dwellings, but when it comes to commercial, it's, it's not immediately clear, just thinking about it, whether that would actually help, but I think, in, in taking a minute on this, and reflecting our regulations, it seems that in the downtown, the village, and our service center, and neighborhood center, there's not really any real motivation to, to change the regulations, because there's no needed flexibility for having either just straight-up commercial use, or mixed use with commercial in it, which isn't to say that there couldn't be places where an accessory commercial unit might still be applied for, but where it really could potentially add flexibility in a way that might be interesting to the commission, is the mixed-use neighborhood, ironically, and the residential neighborhood district. And that's because the, while commercial units are allowed under conditioning, under conditional use in the mixed-use neighborhood, it is size restricted to a pretty, a pretty significantly small floor plate compared to what otherwise would be allowed for residential in that neighborhood, or what we might see typically from commercial outside of that district. And then in the residential neighborhood, there is virtually no allowance for commercial at the moment, but we do specifically carve out two thousand square foot stores, neighborhood market is the term we specifically use, on parcels on Western Avenue east of the highway, or the, or South Main Street, and then professional services of the same size, up to two thousand square feet in the same part of Western Avenue. So those places are fairly restricted when it comes to your ability to develop commercial, so the idea of a small, contextually appropriate place to have commercial beyond what's allowable under home occupation, may well be an attractive type of flexibility to add to our code. Did you have a question, Tom?
Yeah. Do you wanna go first, Gary?
Well, I was just a quick, mine's a quick, that's like, up on Canal, you know, there's a lot of business, like, I live above a business, so mentioning that, we're saying three-plus units, how does that constitute, because my landlord puts this down, is it, is it commercial? Not rental, I get confused with that.
So you are in a mixed-use building, if I recall, and that, I mean, that is, it's pre-existing commercial in the mixed-use district, so there's no issues there.
I think what you might actually be asking about is the assessment category.
Yes.
Where they, they assess buildings of, I think, five or more, or potentially three or more units.
But convert, can be converted to, like, living units.
There's some breakpoints, but.
So I didn't know if that's in scope.
For our purposes in land use, that were, a large apartment building is a residential use, and that's a store part, if there wasn't any apartment over top, would just be a commercial use, but when you put them together, you've got a, a mixed-use structure.
That's for zoning purposes, though.
Okay, got it.
Got to separate. Tax, tax purposes different.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so I see how you got that set up there, because it was when NAPA had left, now it's just Code Three, there's no barber shop, but it's got converted into, NAPA into a living unit, any business, it's complicated.
Oh, you may have just ratted someone out, Gary, I looked at his face.
Breaks all, breaks.
Yeah.
At two thousand square feet, that would be a new construction, would be limited if it wasn't mixed-use, standalone commercial structure, new construction, like, you know, if you proposed, if you proposed to build one today in that place, in, in the mixed-use neighborhood, that would be the largest you'd be allowed by our zoning, but I think the mixed, if, mixed-use structure, if you were to propose that, could be, I believe, four thousand square feet, but I could be underestimating.
Yeah, stepping back a little bit, something about ACUs just is, I don't know, going over my head and I'm not understanding it, why does it seem to be dependent upon residential as the principal structure?
So I think.
Could it be accessory to other principal types of structures, uses?
Wherein it's not defined in state statute or regulations, I'd say that the answer needs to be yes, necessarily, or shouldn't be percolated for being yes, and I think that's, well, that was the thinking in the limited potential, but not zero potential in the industrial
I see.
Zone, which is that we currently have one specific conditional use for a factory outlet retail store in the industrial zone, but we don't allow any other kind of standalone commercial, so, having a small shop, maybe, that, I'm thinking, maybe a coffee shop that's in one of the large employers, that caters to that as an accessory to the industrial use, maybe that could be the kind.
Yeah, and so similarly, I, I guess what I just learned from that is that there's, there's this main way of looking at, you know, most common, sort of cliche or whatever of ACUs, but there are, there could be other rarer types. Similarly, it's probably when most people think of ACUs, they're stores or shops, but they could be any other business, right? Just kind of like how in our land use regs, the home business doesn't say it's a store, it's, the home business could be any sort of business, like any legal business, right? As long as it complies with our land use reg rules for home business.
So it could be a restaurant.
An accessory commercial, an ACU could be, our current regs wouldn't allow a restaurant, a small cafe, or that kind of thing, in residential neighborhoods, which is where this, the ACU could be useful.
And then is ACUs, is this, is it helpful to think of it on a spectrum, from like home occupation being the least, the most restrictive home business, less so, ACUs, which we don't have currently, less so, and then just principal commercial as the least restrictive, is that?
As well, mixed, mixed use, I'm not sure if there's really, if, if you're looking at it as how much commercial can you get away with, so to speak, then maybe those two are equal, but.
Okay, but you're gonna talk about current zoning, so I didn't mean to jump ahead.
Oh, no, no problem, I think it's, in a thought experiment, the way you were asking, if it's feasible to do any commercial use in the ACU, yes, because we haven't defined it, but I think we could, we could consider a range of ways to, to define this, if it's something that the commission was interested in having, but I think that specifically, the way that you phrase that as being sort of a middle, actually very relevant to the conversation that we were having previously about middle housing, this being the kind of small, yeah, small, yeah, right, the ACU isn't an official term, you know, far more likely, people, back in the day when these were more common, would probably just call it a neighborhood store, or a corner store.
Right.
Or a depat, or if you're from Quebec, but so, we've got a few. Sure, yeah, neighborhood bar, this one here, and I'll try to zoom in a bit, was, I believe, a barber shop that fronts the street, and so.
Is that South Main Street?
Yeah, yeah.
Wasn't that a meal, was that a meals?
Yeah, it was a meals, that was a bar.
It was a bar.
Yeah, way back was a bar.
May have been a barber shop.
It might have been. I thought it was lots of...
But there's, there are at least three examples. And I'll cop to being pretty new to town still. So I don't know what it maybe used to be. But now that it's abandoned that use, it couldn't resume being what it used to be. And I think that's worth taking into account. Especially when we have these conversations about what fits the residential neighborhood and what's traditional and what we might find this, but it's illegal. So. But that's up to you. So these were also in the same area. One of which is no longer in the world, it's been demolished, which is on the left. And then on the right is, actually in the form that you'd usually see in ACU or an ADU. This is a yoga studio in that little mini shed home structure in the back there. So that's, that's an interesting way to do it as well. So in the same way that the ADUs could be internal or attached, that is also something that we could consider thinking about with commercial versions of this. However, I do think it's important to talk about the relationship to the streetscape that is different between these two, because one is residential and one is commercial. I don't think it inherently needs to be the case that the ADU lives in the back of the lot, if it's detached. But that's the way that pretty much universally gets done. And that works well enough for residential, especially just given the shape of a lot of residential lots, that's a place where you can fit one. Whereas, commercial units tend to do best when they front the street, when they address the street, and you can walk up to it. Having to cut through someone's backyard to find the barber shop or the bar that's in, maybe in a shed in their backyard. I think that sounds fantastic, but that might not be everybody's cup of tea for finding a bar. So you could even think of them being fairly large as infill commercial. And this, to my understanding, was an infill commercial block. Whether or not it's particularly attractive...
And we all love it so much.
Successful version. It would seem that there was an ornamental lawn to this large, mansored roof home there that was infilled with a commercial structure at some point. And this one does primarily address the street. But yeah, that, that front yard setback location that they might normally need to be located in is potentially more source for conflict than the ADUs that might be able to be tucked behind the massing of a home in a backyard. But we have a few examples as well of standalone commercial that, I labeled these tiny commercial structures because they weren't necessarily accessory to something. But this is what we might be thinking of as potential scales of things that may facilitate.
We know who...
This is not, of course, the accessory commercial unit, but it's an example of a neighborhood store that's just in a residential area, serving the needs of people who live in that area. You know, like, Gary would be able to walk to this.
Oh, yeah, E-liner right there.
Tom, you too.
We'll tell, get us grinders.
Good creamies.
So, you know, of course, this obviously looks different all of a sudden as well. But that's a, you know, you've got a restaurant right in the middle of a neighborhood.
Restaurant.
And so, this is a very small commercial structure that exists in an otherwise predominantly residential area. And so, leaving Brattleboro for some more concrete examples. Here at the one intersection in Providence, there's bottom-floor bar on one side, interior, and then there's a outdoor courtyard with a restaurant on the left-hand side. And just an example of a mixed-use neighborhood primarily. But I believe that the restaurant was an infill commercial unit as well. And then there is the Florence Pie Bar, which is a, like, shotgun commercial that is right directly next to a home. And so, these things do, can and do coexist with one another in certain places. And so, we can think about where that makes sense. We've got a couple other just vernacular, corner, commercial. This one in Amherst is sort of at the, a triangle island in the middle of a street next to a railroad. So it sort of fits in where it can. And then you've got a restaurant that fronts the street in a residential neighborhood, again in Providence. Some various types of commercial on both sides of this three-floor, four, four-floor home in Providence. And I guess that's all for the pictures. So are there any additional questions beyond what we've discussed?
Two. The first is, I skimmed and then heard what you said, but is there a suggestion that this be allowed by right or that it be a conditional use?
So I think that's up to the commission, what seems to be the more appropriate way to do it. I mean, if, if I was giving my two cents, I'm wary of having things be conditional use just for the sake of it. I think the way that we treat other accessory structures tends to be effectively by right. And there's statute reasons for doing that with ADUs, but that's not the case with a accessory commercial unit. But, you know, I think it's worth really considering what's the most harm that could happen from a small neighborhood commercial structure. Essentially, there are other ways to limit what uses could occupy one, if that was the route that the commission wanted to go down. But it's, it would seem that the conditional use is a tool that is used to be very cautious and provide, like, you know, a public hearing for the sake of vetting whether something's appropriate. I'm not sure that neighborhood commercial warrants that kind of scrutiny.
The reason I ask, and this is interesting for me, because I'm a big proponent of ADUs and also a big proponent of active transit. But I could imagine a yoga studio, for instance, that has 30 people arriving at one time, has a lot more impact on the immediate neighbors. Or a bar that's in a home has a lot more impact on the immediate neighbors than a single ADU or even a four-unit apartment building, just because of the volume of people coming and going and the noise, depending on the use, the noise that might be impacted. So there may well be other ordinances that would relate to those, you know, concerns. And therefore, it doesn't matter because we have a noise ordinance, or it doesn't matter because, you know, parking and street parking, or whatever. But I wonder if there's some way to think about, what are the, what are the reasons people are going to push back against this? And if it is the noise level of the bar, well, then we have a noise ordinance, et cetera, but...
Yeah. We not only have the noise ordinance outside of land use regulations, we've got performance standards to address nuisance or potential nuisance conditions. Things that would be impactful beyond the property line. And one of those that's probably, almost always, the one that is discussed more so than any other is noise. Although odor seems to come up a lot in the DRB lately. But, Gary?
That also was an issue, too. Well, also parking and emissions, like where I'm at, there was issues with parking because commercial versus residential. So you fall in that, because like I was saying before, it's not that much on-street parking inserts. So during the snows, you had to relocate. So that, that also could fall in the purview with, I can't forget any, litter. Okay, litter. And that's another thing, too, that comes into play when having, so if you have a single business like I have right now, since NAPA left, the barber shop left, this ample parking for residents. Then what happens with landlords, they say, well, now you can't park there. Because businesses are there, which now are taking precedent. Because now he's listing as more commercial versus resident. Because it seems to me this is what happens even where I'm at. Because we were speaking about the parking with those little garages and stuff, like, people have those garages down from Canal, you can park. So taking that into consideration, I think we can look more into maybe a process where that residences and commercials could coexist together with certain parking limit. You know, because that's a big issue even downtown.
Yeah, and we do allow that now.
We do have a shared parking segment of our land use regulations. And there's also, I think, and maybe this isn't necessarily correct, so feel free to shove me down if this is not true. But I think whereas we would maybe be adding a new thing to our regulations, we don't have to inherently subject an ACU to our existing parking minimums, what we do with them notwithstanding. I don't think that we need to inherently require any parking with these. And I think there's been a long unresolved conversation for months about what the value of the minimum parking or not is in other dimensions of our land use. But that isn't something that we would necessarily have to, have to do. And I don't think that it would actually work in any of these mature neighborhoods, so to speak, situations where you're looking to allow for somebody to build a small unit of commercial up to essentially the lot line, up to the, or, that's also up to you. But within what would be the minimum front setback, would, well, that's also up to you. But my recommendation would be to allow that as an encouragement, which is something that we do for porches and other kinds of, or is it a deck? We use, we use specific words for which yard that they're in, I noticed. But whether it's a porch or a deck, one of them is allowed to encroach into the front setback, whereas the rest of the structure wouldn't be present. So I would recommend considering some of lenience in that way over what would be otherwise allowed of a structure. Because that's the place where commercial would tend to work best, just in terms of its social interaction with the built form. But I think putting parking in that tight space just wouldn't really make sense. It would pretty much just nullify the potential impact of that corner store type thing.
Any commissioners who have, yeah, Tim, sure.
Just had a comment about parking. I mean, I think the parking, people are obsessed with parking. Especially when we're, when we're talking about creating neighborhoods and walkable neighborhoods. It pretty much works against the idea of what we're talking about here with these structures, I think. And I would love to see us bring back neighborhood pubs, neighborhood stores, you know, corner stores. Because the point is, you can walk there. And with a pub, you can walk home. Not to say there shouldn't be parking nearby, but the sheer idea of, if there's places to park. My one question I have for you is, earlier you mentioned places like Ian Wolf's Pub, which I think was the, it occurred to me, and that was the name of the pub. One of the pubs that shut down on South Main or near South Main.
Yeah, right up over that hill.
What was the mechanism that made that fall out of that permitted use? Because I don't understand that. When it was abandoned as a commercial use, it just falls into the neighborhood. So the way that our local regulations define it, and as I understand it, it's, the abandonment isn't actually all that well-defined outside of local codes, at least in terms of being tested, like, in case law. But the way that we do it is, if you are not a residential use and you are no longer actively using the structure for that purpose for 12 months, then it is no longer a continued active use and it's considered abandoned. But there's considerable ambiguity in the way that we phrase it. So that was something that was at issue with one of the appeals to the DRB last hearing. Is like, what do we mean when we say that? But I think most of the time, when it's as clear as a bar, if there's no more bar happening in what was a bar for a whole year, then it would be pretty clear that that's no longer being used for that. And I don't have a sense of how long we weren't allowing commercial in that area for. But it would be definitely at least.
I don't recall, you know, at least since 2015, when we did the newest land use regs, I don't recall if the bar would have been able to be allowed under the previous regs, too far back. But, but it's the abandonment, it was a bar, it was abandoned, and it was a non-performing use, so they couldn't reestablish. You have like a year in which you could start it back up.
Yeah. So, but under current regulations, it could still be resurrected?
No. It could be, it's on South Main Street, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so on South Main Street, you could have a small neighborhood store, kind of like Cooper's Coop was. We did do it so that, because at that point, the store on West...
That's not a meals, it's the next one.
The next one, although that one's a meals, then.
Yeah, the one that, yeah. I guess this one's a moot point because they tore it down, to my understanding. Right, must be recent. I think this was vintage 2012, street view photograph. But this, this is, I think, maybe painted a different color, but still a present condition. But they wouldn't be able to, I mean, I guess it's possible to do a home occupation using that part of the home as the home occupation. But we have language in our home occupation standards that mean that it needs to be effectively invisible in the neighborhood and making no, like, signage is definitely not something that you could do like a normal business if you wanted to advertise that you are a business in that home. It needs to be limited in the scale of employees and commercial traffic. So it's, there are ways to do small-time commercial in that home occupation way, and daycare, hairdresser, and other, that sort of realm of services that are fairly small in their employment footprint are typically what we get. But I do realize I meant to mention that there is a significant barrier that we might run up against in considering this with the residential neighborhood district, which wouldn't apply to the mixed-use district, which is that we do have one specific word in our town plan that's still on the books. And that word is shall, or shall not, I guess, is more to the point. But we say that commercial uses shall not be allowed in XYZ part of the residential district, which we have changed where and what the residential neighborhood district is since... Not where, that's incorrect, so ignore that. But we've changed significantly what it is allowed to look like since that 2018, I believe, vintage plan that we put out. But we say shall not, and that has the force of law.
Is that the old language or the new language?
That's still in effect, so.
So running up against the clock, unfortunately, because our bylaws say that we end at eight unless a majority votes to go longer than that. I just want to hear from commissioners who haven't said anything about this concept, if they would like to. Thoughts?
I guess I'm confused by the most recent discussion. If it says shall or shall not in the town plan, the town plan is in regulation. So I don't understand why that would stop.
It's, the town plan should be providing guidance. It provides guidance for our land use regulations. Because the town plan is also used in Act 250 proceedings, it does have some regulatory force. So I think we just would want to be clear, speaking with the town attorney. I mean, not that an accessory commercial unit would require an Act 250 permit theoretically. There could be a parcel here or there that it would, that, you know, we're still in line with the town plan if we were to propose accessory commercial units in the residential neighborhood.
The word that's used is retail rather than commercial, I should specify. The word that's used is retail rather than commercial, I should specify.
I would argue that accessory commercial is accessory to something that's already there, and therefore it's, it's not a dominant commercial use, but we'd want to speak with the town attorney to make sure we were, um, in the clear.
Todd, thoughts?
Yeah, I love it. Let's do it.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll just say for me too, I agree, and, you know, I'm still, you know, confused a bit about like where it fits. Should home business be expanded? Should mixed use commercial be, uh, have different subsets to allow this? Are these actually allowed in some cases? Because multiple principal structures are allowed and we should just permit these things in these zones where they're currently not permitted or conditional? I don't know, but just echo what Tim said about these things being more liking the idea, you know, um, for, you know, increasing walkability, the environmental reasons, the vitality and vibrancy of neighborhoods, more economic and productive opportunities for people to live there. So I'm all on board, but, so I don't know if we need a vote just to encourage staff to, uh, well, to, um, yeah, and if there's any final thing from the public.
I guess I have one, one or four. Wait to see any other public participation.
We don't appear to have a question.
Oh, I, I was thinking too, give more information on that too, as far as how do you constitute businesses? Cause I seen people with, you know, businesses with the garage bay door open and there's housing above them, they're doing businesses out from the garage. So I don't know if there's a way we can continue to have more information discussed on this, the continuance? I don't, cause you said it's eight, I don't know if a lot of.
Yeah. I mean, someone could jump in a moment and make a motion to make the meeting go longer if they wish, but, um, it also kind of sounds like we all are in support of seeing this developed and some draft language figured out and brought back to us. If you guys are on board with it, Sue and Steve?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we needing a motion?
I agree though.
So I don't think we need a vote for that, it's just encouragement and a temperature check of the commissioners. Moving on, I think we can just skip this next thing unless people really have something they wanted to, to blurt out. But, you know, you can always just share things with me and Sue, uh, before the next meetings and likely you'll get on. So, um, how about a motion to, oh, and the public comment.
We have public here.
Public.
The, the, uh, the required, and I'm saying that incorrectly, but, I mean, it is required, but public can always chime in and speak, but if, this is the designated public comment period about anything that's not, um, on the agenda, or if you missed a chance to make a comment, please do so now about something on the agenda. Wendy says, I can now, I was watching privately.
She couldn't hear earlier.
Yeah, if Wendy or Tim, um, or anyone else I'm missing has a public comment, comment, please do so.
I had the wrong, I had the wrong time. I skipped over the presentation. I had another meeting, so I couldn't.
It was taped, so we, we will get it to you.
Thanks for doing it.
Hey, Randy will be back next month with, uh, some draft proposed land use reg changes, I think. So, I mean, we're gonna be seeing her every month up and through December or January, so. Uh, with progress on the project, so. Okay, um, so how about a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you, Gary.
Continued.
Sarah seconds. I think that's all we need to do.
Great.
For a motion to adjourn.
All in favor.
Great, we're adjourned.